Okay, so I'm going to call a special meeting, emergency session of the City of Oregon City Commission to Order for Sunday, December 20th at 5:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Here.
And Mayor Holliday?
Here. So, to get us started, we have item 15-696, "Review current landslide and safety hazards at the Forest Edge Apartments, Berry Hill Apartments, and Berry Hill Townhouses, potentially declaring an emergency." Let me first say to my fellow commissioners, thank you for taking time out on a Sunday to come out here and handle this problem. I've been at the scene since about nine o'clock this morning, and Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Shaw came out and walked the scene with a bunch of us around eleven o'clock or so. So, we've had a pretty good handle on it. We had a very large group of people at the Emergency Operations Center at the Police Department to include folks from the Red Cross, folks from Clarkness County's Housing Division, several of the different police folks. Martin Montalvo has been a workhorse today handling most of the, you know, day-to-day operational things and putting things together. The guys from the Police Department have done a stellar job in taking care of things, and I know I've missed a couple of people, but it's been a long day of everybody buckling down and getting to work. So, with that, I will give it to Mr. Lewis to kind of explain where we're at and where we're headed.
So, this is a site that we've spoken about before. So, the Forest Edge Apartments and really the Berry Hill Apartments, both of those sites are neighboring sites. They're on an ancient landslide in Newell Canyon, and we have been monitoring slide activity on this site for years. More recently, with the wet weather, we've been paying close attention to that. We've seen some localized landslide in what's, I don't have a pointer, but is there a, can I have a pointer?
I used to be able to do that. I can't do it anymore.
So, you know, this is the Forest Edge Apartments, so most people know they get access off of Beaver Creek Road and come down. There's the upper section and then the lower section. In 2006, seven, eight-year timeframe, there was two apartment buildings that were lost at the back, lower end of the site. So, we've been watching what I call slide activity in the form of minor to mid-level ground movement along this area, and this is the access driveway between the upper and the lower site. That has been most active over the years, so we're seeing, we've seen subsidence of the driveway between the upper and lower site. And so, on Monday of this week, we got a report of that again, and so, we visited the site. We've considered it localized, but knowing that there's additional weather, we've been monitoring it regularly, daily almost, just at least a windshield survey of the site. And on Saturday, the city was asked to respond to the more recent slide activity. The roadway continued to move, and so, we were seeing grade differences in the range of six to eight inches of grade change in the driveway itself, and there's, there are some pictures. We can show you that. We will show you that. But this graphic here is actually from when, if you remember, we abandoned the water line, and I just, I had it available and kind of wanted to share it with you. So, disregard all the water lines because all that has been vacated and is really no longer in use. The lower apartments are served by a private water line now and not a public water line. But this red line represents the scarp, or the, really, the limits of the landslide, and they reach way up kind of towards the top of the hill, and right now, we're seeing this scarp is moving kind of further towards, there's an eight-plex apartment up here at Berry Hill and a two-plex apartment in the Berry Hill Apartments that are being impacted by that scarp. And so, we're seeing it edge further and further kind of up the top of the ancient landslide, which is thought to be kind of in this area. So, as that scarp moves and impacts those, we have some real concerns about these two buildings. And then, the ongoing concerns that we have about the lower site with driveway access, they've got a water and sewer line in this roadway that we're concerned about, and then just the concern for vehicle access or emergency response access to the lower site. So, we've put a lot of energy into kind of paying attention to this site, and I think Saturday afternoon, we kind of decided we needed to meet and do another inspection this morning, meet as a group with city manager and the mayor and fire chief and police chief, several folks, our geotech, and come up with a red, we've had the Red Cross, Clarkness County Emergency Management.
I forgot to mention, I forgot to mention Chief Jamie Carr.
Jamie Carr was there.
The coroner of the Fire District One was there.
Yeah. So, a lot of collective energy thinking about the problem, and really, the thing that's taken this from landslide that's affecting drivable spaces and places where vehicles are at to something that's impacting the building. So, we're seeing new fractured cracking in these two buildings up on the top of the slope, particularly the two apartment unit is, you know, most active, and we're seeing changes to that building really every time we go to look at it now. So, today, we've been there three different times. We're seeing new changes to the stem wall of that building that's concerning.
So, John went at 7:30 this morning and looked at that building and noted some new cracks, and we went back at 11:00, and there were new cracks in the foundation even from the 7:30 visit, so.
So, there's, you know, there, you know, our geotechnical experts, as good as they are, they can't really predict how, you know, how quickly the ground will move, but they're concerned. We're all concerned about that, and we feel enough concern about the safety of the residents in those apartments that we're here to ask you tonight to approve a resolution. I think we've actually already issued the, we've already issued the press release and the evacuation order to remove those folks. In doing that, we've thought a lot about, okay, what are the options for these folks? And for the, there's 10 units between the two-plex and the eight-plex, obviously, 10 units, that would, are being asked to move out by 5:00 PM tomorrow night, sooner if they can. And we've set up, the Red Cross has set up a facility or is in the process of setting up. I think it's intended to be functional by six o'clock tonight at the Oregon City High School, and so, we're grateful for that, the facility, and the school district has been participating as well. We've kind of considered a couple of different options, and we landed on the high school, and they're also allowing acceptance of pets, which is important to a lot of these folks. So, we're doing our best. The property owner is also doing what they can. The owner of the property is out of town, but they have management folks, and we've actually met with their geotechnical engineer late this afternoon. So, there's a lot of concern about, you know, these folks being in, being safe, maintaining safety, but, you know, how do we get them out in an orderly fashion so that, you know, it's pretty disruptive when you think about getting that message. So, today, Police Department issued some information in the form of a press release and some tools to help in flyer form, to help them understand what kind of things they need to kind of think about and take care of, and so, that's well underway. The other thing that we've done, and I think they're still in the process, maybe Jim knows a little bit more, but I think they're actually also reaching out to nearly 60 units in the lower level of the Forest Edge Apartments, where they're also going door-to-door. They're interviewing folks to get detailed information about who the head of household is, how to get ahold of them, whether they have any special needs, any special healthcare needs, whether they have options other than maybe the, the.
Shelter.
Shelter. So, you know, trying to go through that door by door, giving them information and providing them some assurances, that's not, we're not mandating that at this time. We're definitely calling that a recommendation, but we're not mandating it. You know, we've got concerns. If the roadway, if there's, you know, slide activity that moves to the degree that access is severed, that would be problematic, you know, there's a lot of vehicles down there. Obviously, the buildings, buildings aren't showing, you know, signs like we're seeing up on the Berry Hill shop, Berry Hill Apartments side that those buildings are failing, but they're, they're showing some signs. They're not showing the same kind of conditions that would maybe, you know, move us to the point where we would make that mandated, but we're just going to be monitoring that, and I think we'll be monitoring that on a daily basis, and just keep an eye on it. That property owner as well has shared information about their tenants and details of their site in terms of, you know, where the number of apartments and who the folks are, so they're working with us on that. They've also shared the geotechnical analysis that they've done on that site in the past. They've also passed along that if tenants need their deposits or need to get out of contracts, they're willing to honor that and allow them to move voluntarily, and I think the same is true for the folks at the Berry Hill Apartments.
Actually, the manager of the Berry Hill site said they're going to have their security deposits and the second half of this month's rent, those checks will be available to those folks tomorrow morning.
That's news. I hadn't heard that. So.
You maybe want to just talk for a minute, just in fairness, about the wall that supposedly, because people might hear about that, about this proposed wall that.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. So, apparently, there's been a settlement between the two neighboring property owners with regard to, you know, whose slide activity, you know, created problems for the other. I mean, I think that's been going on for several years. At one point, the city was involved in that lawsuit. You may remember that as, so apparently, that has settled, and one of the conditions of that was that the Berry Hill Apartment owner would build a wall that would help support the eight-plex and the two-plex.
Actually, the reason for the wall is that the owner is trying to sell the Berry Hill Apartments, and that was a condition, the wall was a condition of the sale.
That's correct. That's correct. So, you know, how all that worked out, we're just hearing from the owner that they were in the, we're hearing from the owner and the owner's geotech that they were in the process of evaluating what kind of solution that might look like, and they have, it's conceptual at this point. They think that there's a solution. When's the right time to build that solution? Not now. If there ever were a right time, it would definitely be in drier conditions. So, and, you know, because of the landslide area that they're in, there's land use, you know, we've got code specific to this kind of facility, so today, we conveyed to them, well, you might have a good idea about a wall, and it might, you know, make, meet engineering requirements for allowance of that, but by the way, you know, you need to come to the city and get that approved, and we'd want to, you know, do probably a third-party review of that wall before it were ever approved, and, you know, I think they acknowledged now's the wrong time to build it, and they were working towards a solution that was more likely to be installed next dry season. So, that cover that, Jim? You think well enough?
Yeah, I think so. So, did you cover the fact that we're doing voluntary evacuation of the lower half of the Forest Edge?
I did cover it. I can cover it again, but.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
So, in all of our consultations today, the big concern that all the public safety people had, Chief Karn amongst them, is that should this slide reactivate, even if those two buildings on the top stay intact, that we lose the road between the two separate pieces of Forest Edge, and we strand 60-some apartments without any access point. And then, the only way we're going to be able to get them out is using this lower parking lot as a helicopter pad and evacuating people by helicopter, which is an expensive and poor choice if that's what we end up having to do. So, I think the idea is we're going to continually monitor that slide, and if it looks like we're about to lose that road, then we're going to change that from a mandatory to a mandatory evacuation. Recognizing this is the worst time of the year to do any of this, and it's come to people, you know, three or four days before Christmas and say, sorry, but you got to get out of your homes, at the end of the day, I was talking to one couple, and they said, well, we appreciate the fact that, you know, you guys are doing this, that if you think, you know, we're concerned enough that, you know, they might die in the event of these buildings failing. Certainly, relocation is a much better option than having a bunch of bodies on your hands, so.
I might add that today's visit, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Shaw and Mayor Holliday, we're all on site, got to kind of witness the change. Obviously, you don't know what it looked like a few hours ago, but we talked about most of the changes that we've observed, and, yeah, I mean, nobody, the contemplation today was a lot about, you know, are there other alternatives? You know, we pressed the geotechnic, our geotechnical engineer a lot on, and Mike Roberts was there with our building to look at these conditions, and I think at the end of the day, we had consensus of all the folks that were in the room, whether it be fire and their need for emergency response. We reached out to the PGE because they provide power on there. I'm not sure I got an update on that, but police, fire, public works, the geologist building, we're, you know, we're all very uncomfortable with kind of this very recent change in conditions to that site, moving from what felt fairly stable to something that's not so stable.
Walking site, and Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Smith can reinforce this, but there are many places where it's obvious that things have happened like in the last couple of days, places where you can see that the ground has shifted, you know, a foot or more in some places, and, you know, I don't know, it's just, it's very disturbing that we have this, and part of the, biggest part of the problem for me is that this, this set of apartments has the lowest income, most challenged demographic, so, and finding new places for even these 10 families is going to be extremely difficult, given the rental market and everything else. So, you know, hopefully, we don't have a problem, but we've got 10 days of rain coming up, starting with a major storm and windstorm tomorrow. So, you know, I think we have to realize that the ground is already saturated and is only going to become more so, and with all this new movement, openings, that allows more water to get in places and cause more trouble. So, I think we need to be prepared for the fact that we may actually have to do a mandatory evacuation of the lower end of the Forest Edge Apartments, and that's going to be a real problem.
So, just a point of clarification, are we contemplating evacuating the units temporarily until we know the extent of the slide damage after the rain stop, or is this a permanent evacuation?
What has happened is that the building official has deemed these dangerous buildings, the two-plex and eight-plex, because of the foundation changes and because of the earth movement. If in fact, and I'll let Mike tell me if I'm wrong, if in fact, the building owner can get in there and repair it and basically take away the concerns about the foundations, about the ground movement, that they can in fact reoccupy it. Is that correct?
Yes. Why don't you come up?
Mike Roberts, building official for the City of Oregon City. We've posted the buildings today, units, as John was saying, units 20 through 29, and what'll happen is as of 5:00 tomorrow, there'll be limited, well, there'll be no access as of 5:00 tomorrow, and what that'll do is that'll allow the owner to work with a structural engineer and a geotechnical engineer simultaneously to see if there's a resolution to repair the site and the buildings.
And would you think that a repair is likely to be able to be done prior to, say, spring?
That's going to depend on the weather and the conditions of the site.
Right.
I mean, I can't say.
Mayor, one of the things that I think is a really good point, just so people don't look at this as just an arbitrary, it looks bad, dangerous, there are specific things in the code. We're looking at the building code, and there's something, and I'm paraphrasing, but it basically said, if you would not, on the same site, approve a building permit based on whatever conditions that were changed by the weather or a slide or something like that, if you wouldn't approve a building permit today, so if those two buildings were not there right now, and, and Mike went out there and looked at this, and the property owner said, would you allow us to build these two buildings right here? Would you do that based on those ground conditions? The answer is no, and the code basically gives that as a reason to condemn something as, well, I won't use the word condemn, but to label something as a dangerous building. So, it's not an arbitrary, there's specific language in the code that's being followed in labeling these buildings.
So, you want to run through these pictures, John?
Do you want to cover the code?
Quickly, so you've got chapter 15-24 is your dangerous building code, and it gives several conditions for what a dangerous building is, and I want to read two of them. Whenever any portion thereof has been damaged by fire, earthquake, wind, flood, or by any other cause, whether natural or human, to the extent that its structural strength or stability is materially less than it was before the catastrophe and is less than the minimum requirements of the building code for new buildings of similar structure, purpose, or location. So, you have a building that is okay, damaged, and now is less than it was before and less than you'd be allowed. That's one. And the other one is whenever any portion because of removal movement or instability of any portion of the ground necessary to support the building is likely to partially or completely collapse. And so, you know, we have that as well, so we have damage to the building as a result of the ground movement, and we have the expectation that that ground is going to continue to move, and, and so, in the judgment of the building official, based on the geotech and the other information, he's found that these are dangerous buildings and posted them to have people out of it. So, you know, the reality is that, you know, we don't know what's going to happen there. They have the ability to do some work to see if they can make them not dangerous, but it's going to, you know, given what we've seen of the conditions out there, they've got some work to do.
Does this designation change the insurance picture at all? Does it make more resources available perhaps?
I don't know the answer to that. As far as, are you talking from your.
If, for instance, we designate these as, you know, unlivable or whatever, does that change? I mean, I'm sure they have property insurance. Would that help somehow mitigate the tenants, or, I'm just wondering.
We don't know, and it probably depend on the insurance policies, and, you know, we just don't know what their, what type of insurance they're able to get, given the condition and location of those buildings.
I don't, I don't know about commercial properties, but I can tell you, for most residential properties, landslide insurance is not often obtainable.
You need it, you can't get it.
Right. So, this is the backside of the eight-plex, and really, we're standing right behind the duplex, and it's really the top of the, of the scarp that, you know, you see the, this is where you see things kind of stop, you know, dropping off from level to some kind of a, the top of the, again, the top of the scarp where it's, it's kind of, there's a tension crack there that's, that the ground below that is essentially kind of pulling it down the steep slope.
So, if you notice the mid-right of the picture, you can see the dark brown. That's where something has already moved because it's, you know, it no longer has any vegetation on it, and there'd be more pictures like that coming up.
Right in here.
Yeah.
Well, and Commissioner Shaw made the comment to me that the decks were taken off.
The decks are gone, yeah.
And so, was there movement last year, the reason why they took the decks off?
It has been moving, yeah. So, this is, you know, some of this is, you know, from the building owner's perspective, sometimes, oh, we've seen this before. We're not, you know, we're not sure this is something to be concerned about, so, but what we're seeing is we're seeing cracks in each one of these vent in the stem wall. Each one of those has cracking that's associated with, you know, the, again, the tension of that slope kind of moving further down the slope. So, yeah, they've done some things, like they've routed their rain drains, although that piping is now needing a pretty major tune-up because it's not exactly working as planned, but, you know, we're, you know, this building has got some recent cracking in the foundation that we're fairly concerned about. So, that's, that, I guess the other thing I would say about that is this, you know, that wall that Jim mentioned, this is kind of, I mean, the property line for this property is really up here at the top of the bank, so if there was a wall design that they wanted to build during this time of year, I just think it's a disaster waiting to happen, so I don't think that was their intent. They were hoping for those, you know, this to remain stable during this winter season and build something in the summer, but that's just not what's happening. That's that photo. This is a picture standing in a similar location, only looking the other direction, so this is recent. I mean, this went, I mean, within the last 24 hours, we saw this open up and this drop, you know, so these are probably 12-inch cracks in width, and, you know, you can see down in many of those into the softer soil, so, and this is up at the top of the bank, behind the duplex, and the duplex is really, you know, pretty astonishing to see some of the cracks in that foundation. We don't see the earth pulling away from the foundation. You know, this is maybe 15 feet from the, from the foundation, but, you know, we're definitely seeing cracks in the foundation, so that.
What would you say the elevation is, change is from the duplex and the eight-plex and the road to the bottom of the hill?
Oh, that, 80 feet. We probably.
That'd be a hell of a ride, huh?
Yeah.
One of the things the geotech said is problematic too, and I don't know if it's in another picture here, but that, that crack is much longer than what you're seeing here, but when it really starts raining, water starts running down into that crack, and you've got already saturated soil and water filling, there you go, starts filling these cracks, and it just really, according to him, makes the whole thing worse.
Yeah, here's more of that kind of extension of that same cracking in an area. They did some work over the summer to grade this, and they put in some erosion control. This is a wood chip, kind of a berm that, there's wood chips and straw, I think, in this, in this particular one, but just to kind of keep that slope from eroding too much, and I think it's worked. It's just, you know, saturated, and the weight of that's just kind of pulling things away. This is again behind the eight-plex, and I'm not sure what this is, but I think there's been slide activity along here. They actually have done some geotechnical work recently that involved drilling a casing down here, and I think they're trying to determine how deep the, how deep it is to some form of bedrock or some better material, so that if they were to design a wall, they would, you know, figure out how deep they needed to be with that. This is a picture kind of looking across the driveway, and this area has changed, you know, obviously, you can see, over the years, this driveway has been built, at least one, rebuilt at least once, maybe twice, and, you know, so this 12 inches of grade difference between where the curb is here and here is on top of what's been replaced over the last, you know, six to 12, or six years, so, you know, it's significant. And by the way, there's the water and sewer line running the same roadway, so we're pretty certain it's not going to take much more movement before that water and sewer line separate, and at that point, we'll have to talk about, do we allow us another repair of that, or, you know, is that putting people at danger, you know, crews at danger? But if we can't repair that, then that means all the units on the lower end, all four of those units, would be without services, and that would mean a mandatory evacuation. And that would mean a mandatory evacuation. This is of these, these garages sit right at the toe of the slope, right below the eight-plex. And we're, I mean, we're seeing, these are saw cuts, but we're, and pavement joints, but, you know, we're seeing those change very rapidly. I mean, when we looked at that on Thursday, we were looking at maybe half-inch cracks, and today, these, these cracks, not only are they wider, but they're grades separated. So, we're, we're seeing that, that kind of activity as well. So, and, and this is just one, they're, they're along this side as well. And, you know, these garages, as you can tell, there's some things that are misaligned. Can you see some of that? Definitely garage doors aren't opening. That, that's been the case for, you know, I would say, more, a couple of years now, but they're definitely looking worse. They're definitely looking worse than they have in the past. So I think they're going to be the next... There, there, there's a buildup of soil on the backside of these, and I'd see these not lasting much longer.
That, that portion's been quite a while. That crack you saw in the last one, we've got, we've got pictures from a homeowner, they're all watching this, and that crack, she has two pictures side by side that she put on Facebook, and that 12-inch that drop from that curb that John was talking about, according to her and her pictures that she's got up, she's got a side by side, that's in the last two days, 12-inch drop in that, in that one spot of the driveway between those two.
Is that the last picture, John?
Yeah.
That's the last picture that we have. We've got a bunch more, we just don't have them available for you. So when we were walking the site today, this, this crack that you see in this picture really doesn't, doesn't really describe the kinds of things that we saw. Coming down on the, what would be the left side of this picture, along the front of the apartments, the, the pavement is separated from the sidewalk by a good couple of inches at the mailboxes, and it, it is spreading so that the, the ground that's downhill is pulling away this way, and the ground that's uphill is being kind of buckled up. So it, I just saw some amazing, you know, it's really terrifying what it looks like and how, you know, bad things could happen if we continue to have these kind of rain events.
I would say, you know, their surface, they've been mostly limited to the driveway access points and some of the walkways. The buildings still appear to be, doors are opening and closing properly. We're not seeing major, you know, cracking in the foundations of those buildings. So we have, you know, a little different opinion about those buildings as opposed to what we see up on the top of the slope. So I just, I want to be clear about that, because we're not mandating this one yet. I see that coming though, at some point, especially if we can't get this, you know, this recommendation to move to be effective. And a lot of those folks don't have a lot of options, so whether they take that recommendation and do something about it, or if they stay there, we're waiting to see where that happens, but, or how that plays out. But we're going to be on, we're going to be regularly monitoring the site, probably daily, and we'll be in touch. But in, just to transition into, you know, what we're asking for the commission to...
Let me say one, one thing before, the, the thing that, in, in emergency services, a lot of times, we're in a place where we're trying to decide, do we act now or do we wait till tomorrow? And the question, a lot of times, is, are you going to feel better explaining inaction or explaining your action right now? And I think when you look at the two sites right now, and you've been out there, and we've got all these people who are educated in these different respects of what this is. With the upper site, I think that we as a whole, after a lot of speculation, got, are confident that nobody is comfortable explaining inaction because of how it looks. And you're talking about people in their homes sliding down the hill, and I don't think any of us want to explain it in action. The lower site, we, we had a lot of discussion about evacuation there too, but we're, we're kind of comfortable, at least taking a wait-and-see approach, but we really hope that the people in that lower site, who are getting all this information as we speak, door-to-door, that they really take that seriously, because, as John said, we could very well be back here tomorrow doing the same thing, and that's 60 units.
And at a minimum, we want those folks to, to keep their vehicles above, you know, above that break in the, in the roadway, because should we have an event that closes the road, we need them to hopefully at least be able to get to their cars. We don't want to trap vehicles down there and have people trapped with no way out other than a helicopter. So, you know, I think that's the, that's the thing we're concerned about right now. So let's move on to the resolution. Oh, Mr. Smith?
I have a question. In regards to the shelter tonight, that's Oregon City High School, the new campus.
Yes.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And?
On Beaver Creek Road.
Right.
Yes.
I want to clarify, though, that that is also open to the voluntary...
No one will be turned away.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Are we, yeah, I have, there's someone here from the Red Cross. Are they prepared, in the event that we decide that the lower portion, if in the next couple of days, needs to be mandatory evacuated, that we have the capacity at the high school to deal with that? And at, what timeframe do we have availability at the high school? I think, I imagine.
Sir, I can answer that question.
Come on up. Name and position for the record, please.
Thomas McCannimer, in Red Cross Cascades Region.
Thank you.
We have a shelter operations team setting up the facility as we speak. They're due to open at 6:00. Our initial instructions were to expect at least 50 people tonight, with the possibility of as many as 200 within the next day or so. So they are making arrangements to have a capacity of up to 200 people. We're setting up a commons area, a common area in the high school commons. We're using the main gym as a sleeping area, and we've also identified some of the auxiliary gyms that we can also use for additional sleeping areas, if need be. We're establishing a disaster mental health room, disaster health room, and we're also making arrangements in case the news media arrives, a separate area away from the commons area where the news media can conduct their interviews.
And then there's also, the Humane Society has a section there for pets, is that right?
They will. They have not commit, they had not come in at the time I was at the shelter. I was over there initially, and then came down here for your meeting.
Okay.
And how long do we have that ability at the school?
My understanding was within the day.
No, I would do the length of time.
Through the next week?
June 3rd is what I wrote.
You mean January 3rd?
Or January 3rd, sorry.
January 3rd. Okay.
The, the timing is such that with the schools on holiday break, the facility is available.
So...
What's the plan beyond?
Well, you know, today, we were worried about today.
Right.
So, you know, part of the thing is, you know, yeah, we're kind of have to play it by ear and see. The key here is, is that the Red Cross does temporary shelter. So typically, what, seven to 10 days?
It depends. It depends on the nature of the disaster. If there is an additional need, we will remain in position or relocate a shelter to a different location for as long as there's a need.
Okay.
Thank you.
But, you know, once again, realizing that, you know, at least the people from Berry Hill are most likely going to need fine, permanent relocation. Because the likelihood of anything being able to be done to fix those buildings before spring is probably very, very low. And hopefully, they're still there in the spring. If we have to do something at lower Forest Edge, I think, you know, that's a, that's a huge problem. And, you know, we're going to need help from the state, maybe even the feds. So, you know, we'll have to talk about that, but I think we're going to take it right now, we're going to take the, the length of this resolution. So let's move on to that, because we've only got a couple more minutes with Commissioner Mengeberg.
So, basically, the resolution is declaring an emergency and adopting some measures to deal with this. As you've heard, the buildings officials already deemed those upper buildings as, as dangerous and ordered the evacuation, and monitoring to see if something similar is required. However, by adopting a, an emergency resolution, it does a number of things. It triggers different things with obligations and sort of sets forth some expectations. So we'll just kind of go, go through what, what those things are. The Section 1 is declaring the emergency in light of what's already happened out there with saturated soils, and if you look at the weather forecast, we've got more severe storms coming as well. Section 2 is to activate and carry out the evacuation plan for the apartments as necessary. As, as you've heard, we've been aware of these apartments for a while, and, you know, staff, I think Martin Montalvo and some other people have been, "What are we going to do?" And so we've got a plan in place, and so we've, we've started that and make sure that the commission says move forward on that. Section 3 to authorize city staff to use all equipment and personnel necessary to deal with the emergency as it comes up. Section 4 is about requesting assistance from the state, from the county, from the Fire District, and Red Cross, or other agencies that can help. And then the, Section 5 is the, the, I don't know, the formatting's a little odd, but this is taken from the city code, and basically saying, you can prohibit or limit the number, the staff can prohibit or limit the number of people who can make, gather, congregate on public street, public place, or outdoor place. And, you know, the concern is that whether it's media or whether it's people, there may be some dangerous places that we really need to, to, to deal with things. Barricade streets or prohibit vehicle or pedestrian traffic, and, you know, this in particular, we're looking at the lower Berry Hill, are we going to have to take some steps to deal with vehicles down there? Evacuate persons from the area designated as an emergency. We've already done that with Upper Berry Hill. Turn off water, gas, or electricity in case we've got a rupture or something happens. Commit to mutual aid agreements, that's, you know, with the Fire District or the county about making sure that we can use personnel. And order such other measures as are necessary for the protection of life property or for the recovery of an emergency. So this, this is sort of the menu that, that's in the city code for emergencies, and which ones we think are, are appropriate. And that's, that's really the, the purpose of the resolution.
I guess I'll say one other little thing, in case you might be contemplating this a little more than what we'd like you to be. We want you to be certain about this, but high winds are projected for tomorrow morning, 50 to 60 mile an hour gusts in the I-5 corridor area, along with a lot of moisture. So we're going to have to keep a close eye on this property.
One, one other thing. Emergency is declared for the entire city. It focuses on this, but our, you know, there's a very good, you know, with the high winds, the saturated soil, there may well be other places, you can name them as well as, as we can, that they might happen.
So we chose to extend it citywide, so that we just had the ability to, to move resources wherever we needed to, and it gives us some ability in the, in the budget to move stuff around if we need to, to, to provide funding for whatever might come up. Mr. Smith?
In terms of the city, are we, will be making visits, site visits, in the next day, at what basis, on what, a regular basis, through the night, or just tomorrow?
It's, I mean, I'm most familiar with the site, so I've been doing morning visits on a daily basis, and, you know, given the, you know, it's likely twice a day for at least next week, and just, you know, we're going to see how that goes.
Right.
So I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1539.
Move to approve Resolution 1539, a resolution declaring an emergency in the City of Oregon City and adopting measures to prevent, minimize, respond to, or recover from the emergency.
No second to that.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Shaw. If there's any discussion, let's have it now. When we get done with this, I'll actually read the, the beginning piece of this. So call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So, "Resolution declaring an emergency in the City of Oregon City and adopting measures to prevent, minimize, respond to, or recover from the emergency. Whereas, the City of Oregon City has experienced several, several significant storms over the course of recent weeks, and forecasting shows additional severe weather events in the immediate future. And whereas, the storm, recent storm events have included significant rainfall that has saturated the soil and created dangerous situations throughout the city, including at the Berry Hill Apartments and Forest Edge Apartments. And whereas, the forecasted storms include more rainfall as well as expected high winds, which could further exacerbate the saturated soils and result in further degradation of the conditions, both in Newell Creek Canyon and elsewhere in the city. And whereas, the recently occurring and forecasted storms are natural events that threaten the loss of life, injury to person or property, human suffering, or financial loss. And whereas, the City Commission is concerned that the expected conditions will require immediate response by city staff and other measures that are currently unanticipated. Now therefore, the City of Oregon City resolves as follows." The city attorney read basically the, the things that we were talking about, so adopted and approved at a regular commission meeting, at a special meeting of the City Commission held on the 20th day of December 2015. So I will sign this. Is there anything else anybody wants to know? We will be continually monitoring that. I'll be in close touch with Mr. Lewis, and Mr. Conkle, and the rest of the staff, and we'll let you know if anything else...